Call the meeting to order at six thirty-five. The Town Council Committee of the Hall, uh, December thir- uh, Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Oh, there's no sound on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, it says join audio on the bottom. Could that be the?
Yeah.
Issue?
Click to join audio.
Can you hear us now?
Maybe.
You're on mute.
Can those on Zoom hear us? I think you're speaking. We actually can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Well, we'll move to roll call. All councilors are present with the exception of councilors Westervelt, Bordelon, and McBride. County Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Last week, attended a holiday reception at S E C T V. It's great to see other councilors and supporting a great public service. Various meetings with constituents and receipt of various correspondences as well. And last night, attended a D O T Public Information Session regarding the Eastern Connecticut Rail and Transit Feasibility Study, very well attended, and implore residents to attend the similar public information session that will be taking place at the submarine-based museum, I believe, on Thursday at noon. So for folks supportive of extending Shoreline East and expansion of rail and transit in our corner of the state, would implore those folks to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Good evening. I also attended the S E C, S E C T Holiday Party, which was well-attended, and various correspondence, so that's all I have to report.
Council Franco?
Uh, various correspondence, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Uh, Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the S E C T V Holiday Party, and full disclosure, I'm on the board there. So it was a terrific event after two years of COVID. It's a great asset to our community, and it's a great place to, if you want to produce a show or do something. Various, received various emails, and then this morning was a participant in a holiday concert at Thrive fifty-five for the ukulele and guitar class, played for seniors, and was a lot of fun. Santa made an appearance, and I think people really enjoyed themselves, so.
Council Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received various communications regarding the Community Investment Fund, ARPA allocations, Human Services, the Town Manager Report, and I just wanted to highlight that this Saturday at the Groton Public Library is Coco with Canines and Cops. You can join Officers Chase and Hodges at the library for ten-thirty a.m. for Coco and to decorate a seasonal photo frame. Thank you.
Thank you. Earlier today, I had the pleasure to attend the annual board meeting for the Connecticut Nature Conservancy with Director Barry, and we spoke about the pending project, which we received seven hundred and fifty million dollars to build the living coastline over near the beach. And we just went there, we thanked them for their partnership because they really spearheaded that effort and brought that project to light. That's all I have. Onto the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Distentions? Carers unanimously, six in favor. Onto new business legislative priorities. We welcome our legislative delegation, Senator Summers, Representative Conley, and newly-elected Representative Baumgartner. We typically meet with them at the beginning of each legislative year, and we go over some of the council's priorities and things we would like to them to work on at the state. So if any council is prepared at this moment?
Well, do you want to let them start first, maybe, of what's going on at the state level?
Sure. Do you guys have anything?
Well, it's, it's a little premature because we haven't started session, right? So our budget in the state of Connecticut, or our financial situation, looks rosy right now. We have a very large but fund balance, that you would call it, or rainy day fund. We are looking to be able to end the year with a surplus. That has to do with the volatility cap and the spending cap and the bonding cap that we put in two thousand sixteen and, no, sorry, two thousand seventeen. So financially, it looks good. However, we're going to be looking at some of the programs that have been funded by ARPA dollars that were, there's a whole section of one-time, I guess, programs and different expenditures that we had. And then we have ongoing expenditures that we're using ARPA dollars that we have to figure out how we're going to fund those going forward. So it looks good for the next year and a half, but then you can see the slope of the curve come down. So we're probably going to see some difficult decisions, not necessarily this year or next year, but in the, in the coming years. Our, our revenues are up right now in the state of Connecticut. We have put down, I think it's eight billion dollars on our, our debt with SIRs and TURs. So we've made a good payment for those funding liabilities. However, the liability is daunting. That's just a fraction of what the liability is. But we're, we're moving in the right direction, taking slow and really specific steps forward. I do think we're going to have a challenge with the ARPA funds, just like you all would if you started programs, and you have to figure out how are you going to fund them going forward. So that's kind of where we are, an overall Reader's Digest version of our financial situation. I think that there are many different pushes that you're going to see in the upcoming session, but we haven't really started. So each of the caucuses are putting their agendas together as far as what they would like to see. I know we talked about some of the bills that we're interested in putting in when we met with the city. If there's something specific that you want us to do for Groton, if you let us know, whether it's bonding for a specific project or something specific that is pertinent to Groton, we did get the list, or I got the list from, from John, and, and it's very large and very encompassing. But if there's something specific for Groton, that's when the three of us can work together to try to get that across the finish line. I will have a bill in that I've discussed about how we fund ECS or how ECS is funded for the town of Groton because it's a complete outlier because of our military component. So all of us are concerned, Christine and I, or, sorry, Representative Conley and I have had to fight for the funding for years and years because we, you know, we managed to get us as an alliance district for truancy reasons, just so we could keep our funding. But we really have graduated out of that now. No one, once they are an alliance district, wants to get out of being an alliance district because then your funding is up in the air. So we really need to come up with a better system, I think specifically for Groton because of its military component. So we will be putting in a bill for that. That will be a huge negotiation throughout every, the way things are calculated and budgeted. But those are just, that's one specific idea for Groton and other ones. But if you have specific needs for Groton, this is the time to let us know, whether it's bonding for whatever it may be, fields, I know you had, that was an interest in the past. You know, the city of Groton needed bonding for the replacement of a seawall that was collapsing, those types of things. That's what we can start the process now because bonding is a long daunting process. It's, it's not easy. And then once it gets bonded, you have to get it appropriated. So we're, I'm really here to listen to what you want, not to really tell you what's going on because we haven't even been sworn in yet, and everything can change in the next few weeks. But people are starting to meet, committees are meeting, even if you are not necessarily on that committee, next time, they're still meeting, they're still pushing forward. There are initiatives I will be putting in. I've been working with the Department of Public Health and our health districts on establishing a criteria for mold because there isn't one in, in the hindsight of what we've seen at our Grandford Manor Estates. There's been a lot of interest in that particular bill that should go through the Department of Public Health. So that would be to set the standards because they don't exist right now as to for indoor testing for mold and how you do the testing, what's appropriate. It's not necessarily appropriate to just do an air test because of the types of molds and they affect people differently. So that is an undertaking that we are looking at in public health. There's a lot more, but I don't know. I, we're really here, or I'm here to listen to you, what you guys think, so that's all I have to say for now.
So I'll be brief because again, we are here to hear your specific requests, and I know I did get the meeting from last week where it had a list of broad requests. I do know, I know some of you, while you're not new to council, are new to in-person council because two, the last two years, we've been more Zoom, and this year, we're going to be more traditional with the House of doing more things, I'd say, the old-fashioned way, first of all, in person. But also, that does mean a little bit quicker, so I want to make sure that you guys know our timelines and we know your timelines. Like Senator Summers said, the budget does seem very good right now. We don't anticipate any large cuts. The governor will give his budget the first or second week of January, and then the Appropriations Committee will move from that. That's similar to when your town manager gives you the town manager's budget, and then you take over from there. Very similar process, so it starts in January. If you have any specific requests, it's helpful to know that as soon as possible so we can start adding those to the committees, especially funding requests. If you have any grants, and I saw in last week's meeting, you guys talked about the Community Investment Fund, and you were interested in some ideas, if you'd like letters of support or if you're filing for any grants, please let us know so we can support that. TBCCA has reached out to myself, and I saw Senator Summers was on the same email, asking for a letter of support of their grant in that as already. So if you, I know the city of New London reached out to me about several requests. If you have requests, the sooner you reach out to us through yourselves or through your town manager, the sooner we can get those letters of support drafted and ready to go. The more towns we have or more requests from different groups, sometimes the more leeway you get us is, is a little bit helpful on our end. Not just for this grant, for any other grants that you are applying for, please let us know so we can support you. And as a delegation, we generally support you. So if you let us all know together or individually, we will support your request. As well as bonding needs, if you have any bonding needs, please tell us. For bonding projects that can take your CIPs out of your CIP budget and free up money for other things. With our healthy rainy day fund and our payments on the pensions, we in Connecticut have freed up over half a million dollars in our budget alone this year by paying down some debt. So you guys can do that yourselves. If you have CIP projects that the state could pay for, that could free up dollars in your annual budget for other things that maybe are just as important but are on a second, a back burner, or if you wanted to deal with a property tax reduction, whatever you felt was appropriate. And I know some of the things that we see on this list of a multitude of things, and I look forward to hearing more specifics because they are broad and other communities may be asking for the same thing but in a different idea. Sometimes it's hard with the concept of saying that you want to support affordable housing. If we're not sure exactly what you want to do, we might be doing what our other towns that we represent want to do, and if you have a specific need, we want to make sure we know about it. So again, you might not know that today, but the sooner you do talk or have a vote or caucus and know about those ideas and can give us some direction, the better we serve you as a, as a council.
I just want to add on the bonding. Typically, if the state is going to bond a project for you, not always, but typically, they want to see that the town is contributing towards it. They're not going to just give you a check to do whatever you want, that's especially the work. So if you have committed dollars for something in a CIP, as Representative Conley has mentioned, that you need matching funds for, or you really want to get it done, and you've saved for five years, you have X, but now the cost is kind of way up for whatever it may be, they do like to see that the town is contributing. So those seem to go quicker, those kind of bonding requests, than I just want to bond whatever, I'm making something up, fifteen million dollars for new fields, but we're not going to contribute. So that's just a little additional information for you.
Thank you. All two, I too will be brief, as I know councilors certainly have many questions likely for the delegation, but for the public, my name is Andre Baumgartner. I'm the representative-elect for the forty-first district, which encompasses the southern half of Groton from the city of Groton to Mystic, so includes districts one and two, six and seven for at least our TM districts, and the southwestern corner of Stonington from Mystic to Stonington Borough. So it is a newly drawn seat. We have, over the last few weeks, obviously, have held no shortage of meetings with constituents, local leaders, and, you know, town officials to gauge their interests and their insights on what they would like to see, you know, certainly I and the delegation work on, and very much look forward to working with my legislative counterparts for the good of Groton. But here to listen, in the near future, we'll be able to share our committee assignments, very happy with them, and will certainly, I think, be able to make an impact at the local level as a result of those appointments. So again, just want to thank you for this opportunity, and certainly, the door is always open should you need anything, and always welcome you to Harvard as well.
All right. Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Senator and Representatives, for being here. One of the topics that comes up a lot here in the, in the council is affordable housing. So it's mentioned over and over again, the need to affordable housing, and we just don't have enough. That's sort of discussed in lots of different ways. Can you just talk a little bit about how the state supports local, affordable housing at the, at the local level and what we should look to or what we can look to, to sort of help move that along a little bit?
So we can do a few things. We in Planning and Development Committee, which I have served on and may or may not, I'll know next week, be on again, I think Senator Summers was on that with me last year. We do statewide zoning laws, which don't necessarily, some are permissive and some are mandatory to the municipalities. One of the things that that committee has been working on a lot is some of the mandatory lot sizes, which again, doesn't affect Groton. Some of our statewide laws don't affect Groton. So one of the big laws that we did last year had to do with the accessory dwelling units, which did not affect Groton because Groton has accessory dwelling units as of right in the town of Groton. So while it was a very controversial bill for some other communities, which don't allow accessory dwellings or two-family homes, in Groton, you could have gotten that zoning permit already under our town zoning rules. So a lot of things that are talked about in that committee are densers, housing by train stations or by areas that are more downtown. Some communities have a very large minimum lot of acres and acres and acres, and we don't have those requirements here. They're very important, I think, statewide for affordable housing with acreage requirements. But again, a Groton need, if you guys are looking for things, that area of making the law doesn't really affect us. What can affect us in Groton are things such as funding for Groton Housing Authority. If there's a project or rehabilitation that you're looking for, if you let us know, or if you, the housing authority lets us know that there's more things they can do to help the housing either rehab or growing, if you need funding for that, we'd love to hear about it. Specifically, I know I've been talking to developers that are interested in certain properties, and those developers have to talk to the neighbors and have to go through you guys and the town manager and planning and zoning to see if these projects fit in certain neighborhoods. And again, some projects fit in some neighborhoods, but don't fit in other neighborhoods. And we have to make sure we find the balance to have some more affordable housing that does fit within our areas. We do have a lot of areas that can be built upon, and we also have a lot of areas that have older homes that folks are looking for funding to rehabilitate, or maybe looking to make that big, large, old home that was a single family into a two-family or into a four-family. And those are things that, again, our zoning laws in Groton town are very liberal and allow a lot of flexibility in some of those things, but the funding is often, grants and ways to do is often a hindrance for folks trying to make more affordable housing.
So if I just understa-
Okay, I was just going to add to that. So we, we financed, like, I'm trying to think, it was like the seventies, I believe, that towns realized that getting developers to create affordable housing didn't work. Like, they had to have some federal tax credits to be able to have people to invest because they weren't going to get the market rate on, you probably know this as a real estate agent, they weren't going to get the market rate for that, for that apartment or for the house. So there was this, they created CHIFA in the state of Connecticut, which basically takes federal funding in, and, you know, you can apply, they have a lot of programs that people are not aware of. If you go to the CHIFA website, they have, for example, a first-time homebuyer program where they will help finance your down payment. So, and a first-time homebuyer under CHIFA is someone who has not owned a home in, what is it, more than three years. So you could have sold your house, not had a, not been a homeowner for three years, and still be considered a first-time homebuyer under this program. And they will help you, and the down payments, depending on your income level, can be anywhere from, you know, five thousand to thirty thousand dollars in a down payment because they understand one of the greatest ways to create wealth is for you to own your home, right? So they want to get you into a home. So that's one program that they have that a lot of people are not aware of. They also have, you know, programs that they will help with financing, and then the town can either add to that by giving tax maintenance if they choose to or not for developers that want to come in and create affordable housing. And I like to use the term mixed housing because, or mixed income housing, because affordable housing has a certain connotation for certain individuals that doesn't really represent what it is. So mixed housing, which is these programs that CHIFA can help finance, at very low interest rates, and they give the developer on the other side tax credits if they meet certain criteria, and that's federally funded. Our, I'm sorry, totally lost my train of thought, but we were, we were talking about that is, oh, mixed, mixed income. Those, you know, some of the quote affordable housing that's in some of my towns is not really what I would even consider affordable. The rents are still pretty expensive, but it's based on your income. So you have people that are new teachers or new police officers or, you know, new real estate agents, people working in electric boat, living in these nice apartments that are considered affordable housing, but it's really mixed income. So someone will be paying one rate and somebody will be paying another based on their income. And that's how the, the federal government figured out that it would work to be able to provide affordable housing for people. So those programs are widely available. The developers that are in tune with this type of development apply through a grant process, and we as legislators don't really have a lot of say. But for example, there was a program in, initiated in Stonington, and the town voted it down because it had to go to referendum. So I did, at that point in time, write a letter and say, look, this is what happened, you know, it went to referendum and it failed five to one, just letting you know. If there's other areas that you think are more important to fund because the town is receptive to them, here's the landscape of what's happening in this particular town. And that really didn't make a difference one way or the other, but that was a, that was a, that was a program that was not funded in that year. And the developer came back and made changes and tried to work with the town to make whatever that they had submitted more palatable to the people that were living in the surrounding area. And I, I think one of the hardest things is people may have a, a concept of what affordable living is, and, and people will say, you know, it increases crime rate, it devalues my personal property, but those things are actually not true, but because it really is mixed use. It's not, you know, what people imagine it to be. So the statistics do not match what you're hearing. So I think as we see new, new developments come online, I think people will feel more comfortable with what the state and towns are trying to do. There's a really interesting development going in off of Clark Lane, I think it is, in Waterford, and it's affordable housing, but they're individual units, individual houses, and they're, they're going to focus on healthcare workers. Excuse me, I have to get a glass of water. So there's a lot to do with affordable housing. Excuse me, I'll be right back.
I think it's just evident by, you know, our, our time on the council, what we've seen in some of the stories residents have shared. We are experiencing a housing, affordable housing crisis, not, not only in Groton, but I think across our state, and, you know, it's, we ought to take action. So, you know, what Senator Summers stated about, you know, moving into the, the direction of having a mixed income neighborhoods is, is very important, especially, you know, as it relates to, to local zoning, and, and so, you know, I'd certainly welcome, you know, any development where there's, you know, mixed use with an affordable housing component mixed in. So, you know, to the extent that you have reviewed your affordable housing plan, you know, I know on the council, we recently passed it, or voted to approve it a few months back, you know, if there are any areas where certainly maybe state legislation, you know, working with our town staff as well, can, you know, help implement that, that plan, would certainly be supportive of. So, but great question.
And just another thing I wanted to add, it came through in a couple other towns nearby. So a lot of our town is under city water and city sewer, which makes it easier to build, especially a little denser neighborhoods like where I live and where you live, where you live, are all on city water and sewer, so it's a little bit eas- oh, you're not, sorry. Are all on city water and sewer, but if you look at some of the other areas of town, don't forget your quads, areas of maybe two con, two homes that share a wall. Those areas can share a well and a septic a little differently than the single-family homes, and if you can get the smaller lot sizes, they are far more just affordable for folks. If you're not using the bigger lot size because you do have to keep your well and septic separate for health reasons, but if you think about a double or quad, you can really do a lot more affordable things within the same amount of property that's still safe for people without the expansion of water sewer. Of course, if you have a larger project and you want water and sewer, that's a bonding project that we're very happy to help you with.
And I think that the bills that you've seen at the state level, for some towns, some of my smaller towns, they really felt like it was a state takeover of their planning and zoning, which in some level it is. If you don't have 10% affordable housing, then we're going to start to withdraw funding to your town. However, many of the towns that I represent that are very rural, they just don't have the infrastructure. They don't have sewer, they don't have water, they don't even have cell service in many of the towns. So it's a lot more difficult. I don't think a blanket legislation, like one-size-fits-all works. And I think, I'm somebody who would like to incentivize towns rather than penalize towns, to try to be creative as far as affordable housing. And I can tell you from personal experience, I just finished an accessory dwelling on my property so that my elderly parents can be on one floor and be close, so that I'm not always running over there when one's in the hospital and one's home. And it was a very long process because it started in the midst of COVID, but it has worked out really well, and I think that that's something that the town of Groton should be commended for. And I, I would make one suggestion to that, which would be to look at the size. When you're trying to move, you know, two people in particular that may be elderly and a lot of the accessory dwellings tend to be somebody who wants to keep their parents from having to be, going to a home or that needs more help, it makes it- from having to be, going to a home, or that needs more help, it makes it really difficult to necessarily fit the criteria of the size, because you're doing like handicap ramps, you're doing bathrooms that have to be larger so that if they need wheelchair access, they can get through the door, and all those things take up square footage, so it makes it really tight. So that may be something that you wanna look at, just a suggestion. I think that it was, it's eight hundred square feet is the, the number right now in the town of Groton. They did just change it in legislation, but when I was filling it, it was eight hundred square feet, and that makes it really tough to, you know, you don't think of, because they do count like the ramps, they count like if you have a little space outside the house where you, you could step so that you're not in the rain when you step out of your front door, so that might just be something that you wanna look at. You can do it, but it's tight.
Good, thank you. Councilor Casier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the two items that I added to the list are rather specific, so I hope that's helpful to you all. The first is something that I brought up actually a year ago before you guys, and that was the North Stonington Bridge. And I would like to see funding for that, if that's possible. The fire chief has brought up the necessity for it for ten years now, since it's been out, and we have, you know, there are attorney opinions stating that it is a hazard, and there could be consequences from that. Our town has also put forth money for that, because they're trying to get water so that Old Mystic Fire has access to that bridge, so I'm hoping that's something that we can obtain some state help with, if that's possible.
Yeah, that's the project that just keeps coming up. We just have to make sure, before we, I think we could legitimately go ask, we have to make sure Stonington's on board. Because this has been like, we have the money, they don't fund it, they have the money, you don't wanna fund it, like, it's, so we just have to make sure that everybody's on the same page before we make that ask, so that when we are successful, everybody's ready to go. That would only be my only caveat, because I remember, I think I was on the mayor, we had the money, Stony didn't want, didn't wanna pay, then Stonington had the money, we didn't wanna pay, and back and forth, it's like ping pong, but we all have to be on the same page for it to, to be able to work, because you'll get the money and then we have to make sure the other town has.
I understand completely. I hope we can all get on the same page for it.
Have there been any discussions this year yet with Stonington's budget? Because I remember last year, you guys were ready to pay your fair share, we were ready to ask for it, and Stonington Finance Committees, they said no.
Correct. We had that meeting last year, right around the time that we met with you, and they didn't seem very willing to commit at that point, but perhaps it's something for this council to meet with them again about.
Yeah, it's really the, I think the, you know, the first selectwoman, she always seemed very supportive, but then it gets cut from her budget, because they have a different form of government, whether it's for finance, so, but we certainly can push that also.
Understood.
Do you have the updated numbers? Can you get us the updated numbers on the costs?
I'll get that to you.
Okay.
Yes, and just on the council, I've been supportive of, you know, the North Stonington Bridge, and, you know, would certainly implore the council to continue those discussions with not just the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Finance, obviously. They have cognizance over how dollars are expended, you know, in the town of Stonington. So the earlier, I think you engage the town, the better.
Great, thank you, and hopefully in your new role, you can facilitate some of those conversations. Thank you. My second thing that I added to this list is I have actually made a referral to our council about adding addiction or recovery specialists. So the Norwich Police Department, and in full disclosure, I am a former police officer, I used to work for that town. They are doing a pilot program. Representative Courtney had obtained funding for them. It seems like the pilot program is working very well, and I think we have all had many conversations on this council about the need for, you know, facing the opioid crisis. We are obtaining some of the opioid settlement dollars, but it seems like we're not quite sure how much money we're gonna get in, and I think something a little bit more of long-term funding to fund a project like this, to bring a recovery specialist to Groton. We already have added a social worker, the community outreach specialist, to the Town of Groton Police Department, which seems to be working very well. So hopefully something like this, that we could obtain state funding, get a little bit more consistent funding, so that we can fund this for a longer period of time, that would be great. And I had highlighted some of the reasons in my referral about why a program like this works. Police officers and emergency responders are the ones who respond to overdose calls, essentially. Police officers are going to be the first to respond to calls involving narcotics, narcotic use, question of narcotic use. Having a recovery specialist right there on hand could be useful immediately to an officer. It'd also be in the best interest to have a trained recovery specialist on hand to deal with at-risk individuals, so we are deterring it from occurring. And to guide people in prevention, education, and services. So this was something that I made as a referral for the council. I'm hoping that maybe some state funding would be great.
Do you have any numbers, or can you get us numbers as to what you, what would be helpful for that request?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I have contacts, I'll try and get you stuff.
And I know, have you reached out to Courtney's office to see if they'd be willing to fund an additional pilot in a, in a town like Groton? So it could be federal dollars, or, that might be something that you guys could write a request for. I know there was a program very similar to this at Jewett City that we did with the state police that you're probably aware of, that is a model, but again, every year it's a struggle for the state to try to come up. It was through a grant program. That might be one way to look at it, to establish a grant program where police departments can apply to get reimbursement for a recovery specialist. But if you have ideas on, you know, what the, the cost is, is the recovery specialist someone who has also had opioid addiction as like a navigator, or is it a social worker? What are the criteria so we would know what the expenses would be associated with that?
So the program that Norwich is running is they're working with Reliance House, which is located right in Norwich. So those would be clinicians, they wouldn't necessarily be like the navigator program from New London, so these would be, you know, LCSW, or someone with a clinician background.
Okay. All right, if you can guess some numbers.
Yep, no, thank you very much.
Could raise the council to Courtney's office to see if the federal government would be willing to help fund it also, that would be another.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco?
So I have lots of things, I don't know how much time I'm gonna have here to get through everything. So I'd like to thank you for your role that you played in the NIP bottle deposit funds that were coming into our community. I've been talking about this for years, and it was shocking and surprising to get so much in funding. It was just, like, shocking. But maybe there's a potential to, if there's a possibility to expand this to other things because, other types of liquors, because people litter everything out the window, it's not just the NIPS, it's bottles as well. And this is also something that could help our community with, you know, cleanup and other things, and maybe even use it for some funding to, for, you know, drunk driving and other things of that nature. Some kind of educational funding in our community would be nice. And then I would like to see maybe some more funding for our state roads in Groton, and every time I, I talk to community members and they talk about some of the things in our community, they're talking about the state roads, and we have to distinguish between what's town and what's state. And, you know, they want, and we've discussed this last year, but they want sidewalks, and they, they want more friendly roadways and better intersections and things of that nature that are much safer, and, so if that's possible, I would like to, you know, if you could push for more of that in Groton, I, I know we have some coming up on like Allen Street and Mystic, they've discussed, I've seen some things going on on 184, but some of our intersections really need to be looked at, and if we could get state to come and look at those and do more with that, if there's funding to help reestablish those. I would like to ask, is there state funding for broadband throughout our state? I, I heard something with ARPA funding, they were offering it to communities that we could do, apply for it, or organizations can apply for it, to get like broadband internet and things of that nature in a community, is that possible?
There was some money through the budget, and there was a pilot program looking at a broadband loop in a certain area to try to get broadband a little more accessible. So we're, we're working on that, and we can keep our eyes out for other areas and let you guys know about them when we see them. But there was a loop, it was for a different, not for Groton, it was for a different area, to see if we could start doing some municipal broadband, which would be great if it worked out.
Because I, I thought I had seen the governor put out ARPA funding and ask people, telling people the whole statewide that they could apply for it.
There is a grant process, I don't have all the details, but I can get them for you.
I can get you the grant process.
That would be great, because I know Groton Housing Authority has been asking for some of ARPA funding for broadband, and I thought if the state had a whole fund for this, it would help them. They're also looking for, because they're looking to possibly do an expansion, they want some sewer funds as well, so I think that would be something that would be really good for Groton Housing Authority, because they're looking for an expansion.
So for something like sewer, that would, you know, that would probably fit perfectly into the infrastructure money that we're getting, and there's one person in the state that's sort of going through all those projects. So if you had that project like laid out with all the details, I would suggest having your council and the town manager write a letter and get it to Mark Bowden, and he's in charge of all the infrastructure projects, if it's ready to go, and try to get it on the list, and then we can all, you know, send us a copy of that letter, and then we can all advocate and call Mark to try to get that funded. If, you know, I don't know if it's just something they're thinking about, or if they already have it sort of laid out with the plans, those are the ones that will probably rise to the top of the list. So that would be a good way to try to get in that, especially because it's a housing authority too, it would probably have priority.
Yeah, that would have priority over a lot of other projects, and again, if you let the whole delegation know when you're doing those applications, we can push and support those types of things.
And on the intersections, I know that I've gotten a bunch of calls, especially up here, wanting to make it a roundabout, et cetera. If you have a list of those, I, you know, I'd go through that in Mason's Island.
I've been given a list.
That would be great, because, and if you also have a list of, you know, I'm just saying, let's say that it's, I'm just gonna pick on the top, it's up, up at the top of Fort Hill, that people don't like that whole intersection, they want it to be a roundabout. Also, like, note down like the worst times for traffic, because I had this in Stonington on Mason's Island Road, and DOT came down, they're like, "There's no issue." I'm like, "You're not coming in the summer, like, when it's backed up, you know, down across the bridge." So if you have little notes like that, that you can help us, so then we can have DOT, because they will go out and look at the intersection, but we wanna make sure they're looking when it's most difficult, if that makes any sense. If you, if you know that, that's helpful. I just wanna make sure. I have to get this, I'm just sorry.
Okay. Also, I mean, like, there's a list here, of course, and there's things that I am fully on board with, especially the, the items that Councilor Casier had mentioned, as well as the pilot funding is something that I've been advocating for, for years, to try and fully fund, because it doesn't just hurt our towns, it hurts our fire departments as well, because they depend on some of that funding. And as in Groton, we have a lot of non-taxable areas that they defend against fires and help people when they become injured. So, and some of these are miles into forested areas, and, so this would help them greatly, I think, as well as our town. There's also the daycare facility, which I'm sure Councilor Parker will be talking about, but that one is also near and dear to me too, that TVCCA is, if you can do whatever you can to help them get the funding for that facility and, and to get them, I mean, they partnered with the town, with our land, and they're building, and I think it's an awesome project. I support the Connecticut Index. I, I am an advocate for the fields and facilities, if we can get funding for that. I know, can I just continue on with my next one? The fields and facilities, if, I know they're working on a plan and trying to get something all together, and when that happens, they, they talk regularly about coming to all of you to help get some kind of funding, and I'm sure the town would have to kick in as I also support the, the request for changes with the assessment and appeals process on legislative changes. That was brought to our attention by our assessor, and how putting back the language regarding banning contingency-based tax appeals, because after reading some of the information on that, it's quite shocking on how that all plays out. I also would like you to fight for us to get the changes with the ECS funding, and how, as a military town, I mean, you know all too well of how, what's happened in our past, and our town would probably be crippled if they came and said, "You know what, we're cutting you by like eight million dollars one year," it would be absolutely crippling.
Nine million is what they tried to cut you last year, that we got every dollar back. So, yeah, we'll be fighting again this year.
So we truly appreciate it, and if you could do whatever you can, assistance, please ask. But that, I think, is a huge one, because our, I mean, even Groton, if you look at the statistics, we don't fund our, our per-student population as much as surrounding towns do, and we're very frugal with our money, but can you imagine us losing that million dollars? I just don't even know what would happen here. And thank you for working on the MOL criteria and trying to set a standard for that. That has been a huge issue within our community, and it did bring to light, not just on the state level, but basically at national level, that we have real, there's really no standard, and it's sort of appalling and shocking at the same time. So thank you, and if you could work on trying to set some kind of standard for that at the state level, it'd be great. And if there are grants that are available, and maybe our town is not aware of them, I would appreciate it if it comes across your desk, that if you would send an email to this council, so we are made aware of it, we would greatly appreciate it as well. And I will be asking the town manager that in the future, that any grants that come before us that have to do with the state, that they be brought to you before the application is sent in to get your, you sign off on it if you are willing to do so. So I appreciate you, and thank you for all your time.
Thanks, that's one thing I think is really helpful, if you're applying for grants, and I think that the manager typically does do that. He'll send us a note saying, "We're applying for this, can you write a letter of support?" There's just a new grant that came out for trails that I will make sure that I send to you, so that your town staff and you all can look at it. I think it's about eight million dollars, it just opened up to help for trail improvements, et cetera. It's hard for us to actually keep track of all the grants too, because there's so many of them, but we do.
Senator, I did send that one.
You did, you got it, okay. So, you know, I sent it to the city, I forgot to send it to you all, but we, you know, our staff usually tries to keep track of them, I mean, because there's everything from agriculture grants to, you know, broadband to this, that, and the other thing, so sometimes even for your town staff, it's a lot to manage, so. Or if you have a specific request, that let's say there's something you're interested in, I'll just say like sea level rise for climate change, if you reach out to me and say, "What grants are there available, or how does that fit?", we can go find out for you. So that's another thing that you can do too. If you're thinking about it, you can call us or text us or send us an email, and we can go research what might be available.
Yes, I, I just, there is, seems like the state and the federal are flush with grants right now, and.
Right, so you should take advantage of everyone.
Absolutely, we'd like to take advantage of them, so if there's things that maybe we're missing and you find out about it, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Yes, the daycare facility, I'm on the TVCCA board, so we can get them as much help as we can. A lot of people use that daycare, and any assistance is greatly appreciated from you guys, from you all.
Rep. Dallagrus, because soon-to-be Rep. Baumgartner isn't sworn in yet, and I already sent in our letter, our joint letter together on that issue.
Thank you. For the Connecticut Index and the assessment appeals, I am full support of what was brought forward, if you guys can assist us with that, and... forward. If you guys can assist us with that. And the Board of Education. The other ones I know there's, we have to figure out the best wording of stuff. I know there's a lot of things here and I think I need more information of what some of these were brought forward from everyone. The busing, I know it's been extended, but how would that work in the long run if they tried to keep doing that? Is that gonna affect towns eventually to have to come if they're with the seat bus? How's that gonna work out in the end?
So the state is funding the seat bus right now so that the riders do not have any fees when they go on it. So those fees are being paid for by the state through April 30th. And then in January, we have to have a discussion as to if the legislative body would like to continue this, that pass that day. But right now the state is funding seat. The municipalities are not getting that bill.
Up till April 30th though?
Yes. And then that's when that law, the special session law that we passed two weeks ago, I believe it was two weeks ago, did it through November to April 30th. So that gives us time to have some public hearings when we get sworn in in January.
And I, it looks like someone put gas tax suspension. And I think I need further information before I even bring that up. So there's some things I'm thinking of. I just haven't formally written them up. And I will send an email or phone call. I'm, I'm a phone person, so I'll call.
Give us a call.
Okay. You call. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll be brief. I think this council put together a great list. Honestly, I can support every item on this list. And if you guys can, can accomplish even a couple of these, we would be greatly appreciative. I'll highlight the Connecticut index just because it's, it's sort of regional and, and you guys probably work more closely with the representatives in New London than, than we do at the local level. So I'll just read it here. Just for those at home, the Connecticut index is an effort to establish a centralized repository and portal that would index, collate and curate data on Connecticut based businesses, which is non-existent at this moment. This is a joint effort with the City of Groton and the City of New London. The funding need is $1 million per year for five years, five million total. So there seems to be some regional consensus on this. And I think it's a great thing to, to work towards. And you might have some help with, with the representatives from, from New London on that. So I'd like to highlight that. Again, I'd support anything on this list. I know it's a lot. I know there's no way all of it can get done, but if there's something that piques your eye and you think it's possible, you know, go for it. But that's all I have. I don't know if councils have other things that they wish to say. But if not, thank you for your time as always. And we look forward to working with you.
I think they can get it all done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would, I would also just add on here, my support for the brownfield funding, that development, we, we desperately need more projects in Groton and we need something cleaned up. And this is one area, the one on, on Route One, that's sort of ready to go if we can get that cleaned up. So I think it would really help with development in the town to have, it's an area that people just seem pretty comfortable with putting development. And the stumbling block seems to be the cleaning up the, the land. So if there's a way of helping move that forward, I think that would be great to kind of get that project or whatever project's gonna go in there to keep it going.
I know that town manager's on the Zoom, but if he can get us the updated numbers on that so we can put that in, that would be great.
Okay. It's right over there.
He might not be talking. He's not feeling well.
Yeah, they have.
There is brownfield grants. Have you guys applied for those grants? Or yes, you have?
I think John was trying to speak.
By the way, I think Zoom is fixed now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And John could weigh in here. I believe they did apply. John, correct me if I'm wrong, and we're denied. Was that about 600,000 needed, I recall, Mr. Reiner?
That is correct. We did apply and were denied a brownfields grant this past year.
Did you have an indication as to why? Or did they just not because they weren't limited in funding?
You know, we tried, I think, three different times to set up a follow-up call with them to get a debrief on what we could have done better. And I think some of it was just the shortage of funding, but we never really got a chance to sit down with them and truly pick their brain of what we could have done better on our application.
And I, I think at a bare minimum, we can look to perhaps set up a meeting to identify maybe as to why that was. And so that way, should we apply in the future, we can perhaps learn from, from those moments. So happy to coordinate that meeting and work with our delegation to do so, Mr. Reiner.
And again, when you apply for those, if you do let the delegation know when you're preparing your applications, we can, we can fight for them.
Can I just mention something? I was just sent an article from what WTNH, Channel Eight there about funding for grants that came out from the state and there were 16, 16 communities, 41.
$41 million was issued this week.
Yeah.
I was not aware that Groton had a denied project. So if you guys can communicate a little more with us.
And there was not one community in southeastern Connecticut that got any funding. So I was like, wow. It was pretty shocking. So.
I think one of the hardest things is like if we, if your staff is not sharing with us, they're applying for the grants. All those other towns have had legislators lobbying to try to get the grants for their particular town and making the argument, you know, this is Route One, this is our industrial base, this is a great economic driver, it's gonna create X amount of jobs if we can blah, 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 whatever it is. But if they're not hearing from us, the other people are gonna win. And I know it's hard for staff to keep track of all of these grants, but especially when you put one in, if you let us all know, you know, you can send one email to all of us, we can all collectively work to try to make that happen for you. But, you know, it's, it's disappointing finding out after the fact that you were denied because I'm not saying we, well, I'm just saying we could have probably helped push it over the finish line. But, um, you know, if all these other towns have cheerleaders out there, it's tough when you're silent. So I'm not saying that's what happened here, but in the future, it really does help. You know, a lot of my northern towns have been very successful in getting large grants. Stonington is doing amazing getting grants, but they always are, Heather, can you go fight for this? Can you do this? Do we need it? What can we do? So that's just really helpful. So if, if your town staff and your town manager is letting you know when you're applying for the grant, or I can't remember, I think it's a matching grant, you have to approve it, right? So you would know about it. Just let us know so that we can, it's helpful for us, I think, to have a copy of the grant application because then I can use the language in the grant application in my letter. Cause sometimes they're like, can you support this? I'm like, I don't even know what that is. Can you tell me a little bit more? So having that grant application is helpful to craft the letter.
And we don't just work with us. Eastern Connecticut is a very tight group and the reps and I know the senators as well work together. So we often do joint letters on multiple projects. So that way, because you, while you have one senator and two representatives, sometimes we can get two or three senators and six or seven representatives together on a group package. But again, if we don't know you're part of the group, we can't advocate for you. So if we can, let us know when you're applying for grants, it's helpful.
Well, it seems like we apply every week almost. So we are constantly applying for grants.
We have really great staff that write letters.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll recess for five minutes. For 10 minutes, we'll be back at 7:43. We're back from recess at 7:43. And I'll, onto alteration of Ascenic Road, 853 River Road. On page 27.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for February 7, 2023 to solicit public input regarding the alteration of River Road is so moved.
Second. Casseri.
Moved by Parker, second by Casseri.
Director Reiner?
Good evening, uh, good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Um, the applicant is not here this evening for this, but tonight it really is just to set and schedule the public hearing. Uh, within your packet is all the information that they have on the number of trees and their rationale. But I could try to answer any questions, but really it would just be some of the information from the packet. Uh, again, main purpose tonight is to set the public hearing and at that here. is to set the public hearing, and at that hearing, the applicant can make a presentation, and I think that's probably a great time to ask questions from the council to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reiner, just my question is, I know this is Julie just for our hearing, but does this change or this request do anything to sort of set a precedent for other properties? Or does every piece of property, if they're in this situation, have to go through this?
Yeah, it's that second option. So every piece of property within this section of River Road has to go through this process with the public hearing. I think, it would have been like three years or so ago, we had a number of these go through, and at that point in time, that's where, you know, the council can really make a decision. There's some criteria within Article Five, the Brighton Code of Ordinances, that really speak to, you know, what the council can be looking for. I mean, it's not super specific criteria. It's referred to in the request letter from Attorney Sweeney, but that's really what we have to weigh. So this is just a process. It doesn't set any type of precedent. This is the steps that anyone in this situation has to go through.
Council Bumgardner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out of curiosity, I, you know, as an example, in the city of Groton, it's pretty straightforward. I think, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of homes are served by city sewer, city water. And so in this case, you know, it's proposed as a home to be serviced, you know, in lieu of sewer service. It's a septic system, and would it also be hooked up to a well for purposes of water?
Off the top of my head, I can look on the plans to see. I can't remember if this area actually has public water or not.
Yeah, and that was my follow-up question. If it was more out of the, you know, the fact that there is no service currently, you know, along River Road for sewer or
Correct.
Public water?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I mean, if there's infrastructure, it's a new house, they wouldn't be hooking up to it.
All right. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carries unanimously at six. On to acceptance of public improvements for Midway Common Subdivision, page forty-two.
All right.
Thank you.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to accept Ivy Court five point four or five acres of open space. Am I on the right one, right? And twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet of land to be transferred to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Isumo. Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker.
Very quickly, so this one's pretty self-explanatory. This was an older subdivision that all of these improvements are finally finalized. So there are thirty-eight lots in total, eighteen of those are still vacant. Some of those lots are large enough for duplexes in case people are interested. Ivy Court, that extension is about sixteen hundred linear feet. The open space or wetlands in a burlap vernal pool, it's access to Gary Court, and the subdivision eliminated an informal connection between Ivy Court to the GNS Trolley Trail. New one agreed to grant easement from Knoxville Court over to Industrial Drive, crossing the GNS Trolley Trail, and actually contributed five thousand dollars to construction of this new trail. That trail was completed last year. Pretty straightforward acceptance on this, put these public improvements into the open space, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you.
Just to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a, this is a trail or a road that we're bringing in?
Oh, yeah.
What is your, Mr. Reiner, this is, are we accepting a trail or a road?
No, we're accepting a road, which is an extension of Ivy Court from Midway Oval to Gary Court.
I have, I can't hear very well. I can understand him. I'm having a hard time understanding what he's saying.
It's the fan.
I don't know if it's the fan. It might be the fan. I don't know what it is, but it's like.
Well, the fan, I think that actually, hold on. Sorry, I recently got new earbuds, so it could be a little bit of that. Let me see. Can you hear me any better now?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand what this is. Is it, it's open space as a trail, or is this a road that we're letting, we're bringing in?
It's both. So we're actually accepting five point four or five acres of open space. We're also accepting twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet of land, a separate parcel that's going to be transferred to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and we're accepting the extension of Ivy Court from Midway Oval to Gary Court. So those are three distinct pieces. In addition, that reference to a trail, that was something else that was completed that was done as part of this subdivision.
So the yellow that's in our packet, the yellow, that's the road that we're talking about? I guess my question is just about, so that adds, like, would I be plowing that in the wintertime? Were we plowing that before because we didn't, wasn't one of our roads?
I believe Public Works may have been plowing that because there were homes on it. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'd have to double check with the Director of Public Works on that, but we will be plowing. If we weren't before, we will be plowing that now.
Oh, but wait, he's here.
Oh. Thanks, Greg.
That road was actually completed a number of years ago. And once the road gets to a certain point where they put the final layer of asphalt on it, we do go ahead and plow it.
Okay.
Just even though it's not officially an accepted road, we won't maintain it, like do pothole patching, things of that sort. We do plow it. But once you guys accept the road and, you know, it gets formally turned over to the town, then it becomes our road, we go out, you know, if it needs to be repaved or repaved, you know, the whole nine yards.
The whole, the whole thing. So does it add anything at the moment to our budget, to the Public Works budget?
No, no. This is half a mile long. It's not gonna.
So we just kind of absorb it into it?
We just absorb it.
Okay, okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
Council Bumgardner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Greg and John, for being here. Just a question regarding kind of how that land would be classified. I know a few weeks ago in a COW, we voted on annotating our land records to, for some of our properties to reflect open space protections. And so, you know, would this land be designated as open space with, you know, similar protections that kind of other designated open space has in Groton?
Yes, this would be designated as open space. This is being needed over to us as open space, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Franco?
So I have the map exactly, so of course I see where the road is, but I'm not exactly sure where the land itself is that's going. Is, am I missing something?
So, depending, the land is going to be on the easternmost piece of the property. It's near, it abuts Gary Court, and if you're looking at the map, there's a Town of Groton map that has yellow of Ivy Court. There's a piece of property that you can see there's a little bit of blue on. So there's two pieces there. There's one that is a larger piece, that is the five-plus acre piece that's going to be donated to the town as open space. And then just to the, say, south-southeast of that is the piece of property that's going to be added to the town. It's part of the W, the wastewater treatment facility.
So it's right here?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. There's a map that shows like a phase one, phase two, phase three. It's right where it says phase two on that map, which I think is page forty-three out of sixty-six in your packet, where that SE two is, that's part of that, you know, the word phase. That's where part of that land is. It says in the wetlands, in the wetlands, it abuts Gary Court there.
Mayor, just to make note, that council border line has arrived on Zoom.
Okay, the time is seven fifty-four. Thank you.
So let me just ask, if, so a lot of those lots on Ivy Court have not been built. So what happens if the developer sells those plots to somebody else? Does he have to give another section of open space to the town again?
No, so this is for the entire development, and all those lots can be either built by the developer, sold off by the developer. This, after this action, this will now be a town-approved road. They'll all have frontage on a town road. It's been fully built out, and that's why, you know, we recommended the acceptance of it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any plans for what to do with that property at all?
Not that I know of. I think, you know, there's been, the family's been selling off some of the assets, so I think time will tell.
All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My hand was up, thank you.
My apologies, I didn't see your hand before we voted.
I also was not acknowledged as arriving either, please, thanks.
We did. You arrived at seven fifty-four.
Thank you.
Are you voting on this?
I guess I will abstain, but I just ask that you please take the courtesy to glance up at the screen for virtual numbers. Thank you.
Will do. Six in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining.
I can read the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I will make a motion for two thousand twenty-two, seven seven three Sutton Park and Shenacostet Golf Course deep grant. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution accepting the five hundred and sixty thousand grant and aid from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and to authorize the town manager, John Burt, to act on behalf of the Town of Groton, including executing any and all documents, and to perform all acts deemed necessary to carry out the terms of the grant program Isumo.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Franco.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. You know, we were talking about grants a little while ago. The town was lucky enough to get a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant from the Connecticut DEP for the renovations to the Shenacostet Golf Course clubhouse restrooms, and to install a new restroom at Sutton Park. And the resolution to accept the grant and then allow the town manager to execute the document as part of the grant requirements. Just a real quick background in this, the five hundred and sixty thousand dollars was divided up for two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the restroom renovations at the golf course, and two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the new restroom facility at Sutton Park. Both of these projects were previously approved in the FYE twenty-two capital improvement program. In FYE twenty-two, the golf course clubhouse restroom renovation at two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars approved. We did go out to bid with this. We, you know, had an architect put plans together. The prices came in about four hundred thousand dollars and up, which was way over budget. This is really due to the construction pricing we're seeing lately with the inflation. I'm just really glad we're not building our schools right now because I don't think we'd be able to. But anyway, the contractors also did not want to bid on the asbestos removal that was in the crawl space below that, so that the price is actually even more than this. So, you know, we really need to kind of combine the grant plus the CIP to make this project fundable. So, you know, our anticipation is to put the asbestos out to bid, get that taken care of this winter, and then do the follow-up with the restroom. And we certainly use the grant funds up first, and then make up whatever shortfall we have with the CIP funds. The Sutton Park was approved for a hundred and eighty-five thousand in FYE twenty-two. We're just beginning to the design process now. We just hired an architect, so we don't have a real good cost, but my guess is that we're going to be well above that one eighty-five. But again, we'll use the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant funds first, and then, you know, dip into the one eighty-five if we so need to. So that's it. So, you know, our alternatives are accept the grant or not, and if you want to go through with the projects, we'll have to add, you know, more funding to this coming CIP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hanover, do you anticipate that we probably have enough with the grant money and the CIP money? You feel pretty comfortable that we're okay with
Yeah, I'm comfortable with both possibilities. Yeah, especially Sutton Park, I don't think
this?
that's going to be an issue at all. The golf course restroom, you know, with the, we probably figured about a hundred thousand for the asbestos abatement, and another four hundred, so we're at five hundred. So we're getting close to, you know, the combined funding matters. But I think we're, I think we're still okay.
And in terms of timelines, can both of these, with your department, do you have the capacity to sort of work on both of these projects at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, we do. Because, you know, we have architects working on both, so it's just, you know, managing the consultants and then managing the contractors so we can... The biggest thing with the golf course is the timing so that we're not interrupting, you know, the golf course operations and the restaurant operations too much. So we have to work with them on that.
So you feel comfortable then with that?
Yeah.
Can I? So, first of all, I'd just like to thank you for being here, and I wanted to publicly thank you for all the help that Public Works has done in our community. That, just let me rattle off a few little things. Helping with the community center that fields over there, I heard that you were there. Public Works has helped with Parks and Rec, is that correct?
Yeah, that project, we put money into the CIP, and we went out to bid twice with it, and both times it came in way over budget. So I talked to my guys, I talked to Mark Berry, Parks and Recreation, and asked if he could, you know, help us out and kind of do a combination partner and get this done. And then we would hire an irrigation contractor to come in, and he, you know, Mark said, yeah, that's fine, we can do that. And I talked to my guys, and they were comfortable that they could grade this out and do it. And I said, okay, let's go do it. And so we did, and we came in, you know, below the CIP budget. You know, Public Works, we did the grading, we hired the irrigation contractor, and then Parks and Rec, and also I think Eric Morrison from the golf course helped out with the seeding, and it's coming in beautifully, and probably ready for play, I believe, next fall.
That, it's beautiful and awesome, and thank you for helping even another department to accomplish something, as well as fixing the submarine sign, which the paint was flaking off, and pulling back some of the trees so it can be seen from the highway, and also installing the flags down on Indian Field Road. The neighbors are very excited about that. And with that being said, I think that if anybody can come in and get these things accomplished, probably within this budget of the CIP combined with the grant money, I think you can, because you are very suave at making sure things get done. So I appreciate all that you do, and I'll accept this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously seven in favor. Thank you.
Good night.
On to human resources administrator job description update, page sixteen. Welcome, Director Green.
Hi, good evening. So I gave you a little history in your packet. I have a current vacancy, and we refilled that about a year ago with a internal promotion. Wonderful job. Unfortunately, that employee has moved on. So as I am faced with refilling the vacancy, I am revisiting the structure as it existed many years prior to that, which was a bit of a higher level position that could assist from an efficiency perspective for our office and some higher level duties, labor relations. and some higher level duties, like relations, employee relations. And you can see in the job description I attached, I added some of the changes in red for you to take a look at, just bringing it a little bit up to date. I also put a little bit of information in there from a salary range perspective of what the higher level position salary range would look like. Is there any questions I can walk?
Thank you. Not yet. I'll read it.
I wasn't sure if that was first. That's why I was.
Yeah, no worries. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the reinstatement of the Human Resources Administrator position and approval of the updated job description is so moved.
Second, Bordaloon.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Bordaloon. Council Parker?
Just a question. Budget-wise, you already have some money in your budget right now for this position?
So we do. It's the current lower level position. So the HR coordinator is the position that just became vacant. That's 56 and change to 71 and change. So this would be moving it up to 66 and change and 85 and change. So there will be some savings realized from that vacancy. Of course, I have to subtract out what the vacation payout would be. So it leaves about a $10,000 difference. I may.
Go ahead. She was quite, she was a good answer. I was going to say, if we end up meeting it, we'll put it in the fourth quarter transfer like we typically do on these things.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
If we end up meeting it, we'll put this in the fourth quarter transfer for the difference if it ends up being needed. That's how we typically handle these.
Okay, thank you.
Council Kassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for always putting like the extras in red for us. It's just helpful for us to see that, that contrast. So thank you very much. My second point or question is, are we anticipating having a difficult time filling this position with the, we've talked about this many times between this council and you. Are we anticipating seeing the same trends in this position?
I think it's a tough labor market overall, both for public or municipal as well as private sector. We have a little bit of a more difficult time. We have a different salary structure. So I do anticipate we're going to have to do a little work and borrowing from here and there to see who's interested and might be able to come over to the position.
Okay. And do we think that raising the salary to the rate that you want to raise it to will make it a little bit more enticing to bring someone in?
I think raising the position, and thus to your point, raising the salary, not only supports the work of our department, but yes, any, people are always looking at that first, and there's other great things, pension and things that we have to offer as a municipality.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other hands? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously seven in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Baumgartner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. We adjourned unanimously at 8:08.